Welcome to the Mass and City Council Meeting for Monday, April 5th, 2021. We have in attendance with us the following city officials. Diane, if you could do a roll call.
Mayor Kathy Caddo zero Perry.
Good evening.
Safety Service Director Barb Sylvester.
Present.
Auditor Jane Ferraro. Chief Deputy Auditor Stephanie Myers. Law Director Justin Richard. Chief Counsel Bill Cabartos. Chief Engineer David Crop. Jason Pope Hill. Community Development Director Samantha Walters. Economic Development Director David Maylie.
Present.
Parks and Rec Director Steve Pedro. Police Chief Keith Moser. Fire Chief Tom Bergasser. Income Tax Budget Director Lori Katagiti's Boron. Health Department Commissioner Terry Arge.
Present.
Is there anyone from the administration on the call that I might have missed? That's it, Madam President.
Thank you and welcome to all in attendance tonight. Under number five on the agendas where the public can speak on any item that does appear in tonight's agenda. And then again, under number seventeen is where the public can speak on any item that does not appear on tonight's agenda. I would like to ask anyone on the call tonight to please mute yourself until you are speaking. Thank you. Roll call.
Kramer.
Present.
Greg.
Present.
Vern Kane.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Littman. Lombardi.
Here.
Sloots. He was on earlier. Yeah, he was on earlier. Sterrett.
Here.
And Tharet.
Present.
Roll call of eight present at this time.
Are we gonna wait, wait a minute or just continue on?
I'm texting him right now. I think he's trying to sign back on.
Okay, we can wait a couple of seconds. I know I saw everyone on before the meeting started.
Madam President, Audrey Sylvester is on as well from the city.
Thank you.
And what is her position, Mayor?
Nursing Director. Thank you.
Councilman Lewis, have you heard any, excuse me, have you heard anything from Mr. Councilman Slotes?
No, yeah, let me try to call him.
Okay.
He's trying to sign back on, but I do have him on speakerphone with me. Mr. Slotes, can you confirm that you can hear us?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Then moving along, Councilman Lombardi, if you would do the invocation and pledge of allegiance for us.
Thank you, President Eisner. If you could join me in the pledge of allegiance. And the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Lombardi. Madam Clerk, are the minutes of the previous meeting transcribed and open? I see Councilman Slotes is back with us. Thank you. Are the meeting minutes of the previous meeting transcribed and open for public viewing?
No, ma'am, I'm still working on them.
Okay. Before we go into remarks of delegation and citizens on matters on the agenda, Mayor, would you like to introduce Audrey Sylvester?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Last week you had asked for an update on the vaccinations within the city. And our Director of Nursing is Audrey Sylvester, and she's on the call tonight. She's been working six and many days per week in late hours, so we've asked, and thank you to the Chairman, that she's going to be able to share you with you the information on the vaccines this evening. Audrey?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So the Mass and City Health Department started administering doses on December 27th of 2020. In January, we averaged about 100 first doses a week and 100 second doses. We're now averaging anywhere from 150 first doses per week to 200 doses of first and seconds. We administer every dose we receive per week, so we're not holding vaccines. We don't have any extra. Everything we get, we do administer. We have completely vaccinated all of Mass and City Schools, St. Barbara's, St. Mary's, Massling Christian, RG Drag, and Indian River School employees. We have vaccinated all interested Mass and City Fire and Police Officers, as well as the Guards at Indian River. That totals to be about 3,700 vaccines so far. Our next step is to completely finish scheduling off our waitlist, and then we're gonna online, launch an online portal to self-schedule to help reduce staff times and be able to start requesting more vaccines from the state to start being able to administer more. So that's our current plan right now.
Does anyone from council have any questions for Ms. Sylvester? Councilwoman Littman?
Thank you, Madam President. How many do we currently have on our waitlist?
682 people left to work through. And we're finding about 70% of those people have received the vaccine other places, but just getting through and making sure we've reached out to every single person that registered with us is a little time consuming.
Councilman, thank you. Councilman Tharet?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Sylvester, have you been receiving the same vaccine or which vaccines have you been using?
So we get Moderna mostly. We have been lucky enough, we received 300 doses of Johnson &amp; Johnson. Most Johnson &amp; Johnson doses are going to the max vaccine sites or to private entities, but we have received 300 of those, and we're finishing administering those this week.
Thank you. So the other 3,400 have been the Moderna?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Sylvester, for your update.
Thank you.
We're now moving to item number five, remarks of delegations and citizens to any item that does appear on tonight's agenda. If you wish to do so, please state your name, address, and topic you wish to discuss. Hearing none, we'll move into new and miscellaneous business introduction. Is there any new miscellaneous business? Are we on schedule to meet next week in council chambers? Mr. Lewis, do you know?
I would have to defer to me, Mr. Lombardi.
Yes, Mr. Hearn Kane and I installed the camera. It is up, it's all ready to be connected. I just wanna go down there and do one more test. Diane and I were gonna test tonight, however, I'm not feeling well enough to be out in public. But I'll go down this week and do one more test, just to make sure that everything's aimed properly and everything. So we should be on track for next Monday.
Is that something you could do on your own, Mr. Lombardi, or do you need help?
I should be able to do that on my own.
Okay. Councilwoman Littman?
Thank you, Madam President. Would the Health Department confirm that that meeting in chambers still is within the guidelines?
Yes, this is Terry, and as of the last orders of March the 2nd, government meetings are allowed to continue. They do still have to have social distance or your barriers, and you have to wear your masks, but yes, they can meet.
Anyone else? Councilman Tharet?
Thank you, Madam President. I have two concerns. One, with the Will's Road construction, I understand one of the engineers was online. I hope.
I didn't think they were.
Yeah, neither one responded.
Well, my question is, I asked questions early on, before the construction actually began, about property and how much property people were going to sacrifice, if you would. I was more than a little shocked when I drove up and down Will's Road and seen telephone poles up against the porches and the businesses along Will's Road. I thought they talked, they spoke in matters of inches, having to give up originally, but that's in the magnitude of feet and yards, so I'm, I was just kinda curious. Hopefully, I mean, it's too late to ask the question now, but answer the question, but I'm just concerned because that doesn't seem to be in the same parameters that we were hold up initially. Secondly, I guess it's another question for the administration, though, and I'm sure they've, they're aware of the the issues at Diamond Court and Postal Place. Couple incidents happened over the weekend, they wanted to ticket and tow cars. Just, I know in the grand scheme of Magic Maskland, that is going to eventually be pedestrian traffic, at least at certain times, but I wonder if there's something we can move on at a little closer before the summer starts, so that those businesses have a more palatable set of conditions to operate under, especially during their peak times in the evenings and weekends.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardi.
Mr. Tharet.
Thank you, Mr. Tharet.
You're welcome. Thank you. Hopefully get something going on this.
Anyone else? Okay. Anyone in the we did that introduction of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 69, 2021.
An ordinance authorizing the Mayor of the City of Massillon, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Kimberly &amp; Company Salon and Boutique to provide an economic development inducement grant to fund expansion costs, including build-out, equipment, et cetera, at the property located at 921 Lincoln Way East, Massillon, Ohio.
Councilwoman Tharet?
Thank you, Madam President. First reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number 69, 2021 has received first reading. Ordinance number 70, 2021.
An ordinance authorizing the Mayor of the City of Massillon, Ohio to enter into an agreement with Chloe's Diner to provide an economic end up, an economic development inducement grant to fund startup costs, including build-out, equipment, et cetera, at the property located at 112 First Street Northeast, Massillon, Ohio.
Councilwoman Tharet?
Thank you, Madam President. First reading.
Thank you. Ordinance number 70, 2021 has received first reading. Ordinance number 71, 2021.
An ordinance adopting the recommendations of the Massillon Tax Incentive Review Committee, the TIRC, with regards to the renewal and termination of Massillon Enterprise Zone EZ projects.
Councilwoman Tharet?
Thank you, Madam President. This is simply legislation to approve the two ongoing enterprise zone projects in the City of Massillon that have been recommended by the Tax Committee. Any questions or concerns or comments about this ordinance? Seeing none, I make a motion that ordinance number 71-2021, that we waive the rules requiring three readings and bring the ordinance numbers 71-2021 forward for a vote.
Seconded by?
Lewis.
Roll call for suspension.
Greg.
Yes.
Vern Kane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Littman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Sloots.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Oh, Kramer.
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
And for passage?
Vern Kane.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Littman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Sloots.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
And Greg.
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number 71, 2021 has passed. Ordinance number 72, 2021.
And I apologize on the previous agenda that I sent out Friday. This was listed under the Community Development Committee, and it should be under Parks and Recreation Committee. It's an ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Massillon, Ohio to accept a donation from Campbell Oil Incorporated on behalf of Massillon Park and Recreation Department and declaring an emergency.
Councilwoman Kramer?
Thank you, Madam President. As discussed at the work session, Campbell Oil Incorporated has donated $50,000 for the, for the purpose of resurfacing the walk, the walking path at Reservoir Park and at South Sippa Park. This was discussed at the Park and Recreation Board Meeting on March 17th, and the motion carried by a four to zero. Mr. Pedro was at the work sessions to answer any questions, but are there any other questions or concerns from any council members? Seeing none, I make
Councilman Tharet, did you have a question?
Yes, just briefly, as I recall, there was a question about if there was any extra, could it be used anywhere else? Or is this the budgeted amount and should take care of it?
Per the per the Park and Recreation Committee notes, and at the meeting, that the cost not to exceed $49,999.
I got you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Sorry, Councilwoman Kramer, go ahead.
That's, that's okay. Seeing none, I make a motion that we waive the rules requiring three readings and bring ordinance number 72-2021 for a vote.
Seconded by?
Littman.
Roll call for suspension.
Lewis.
Yes.
Littman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Sloots.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And Vern Kane.
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
And for passage.
Littman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Sloots.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number 72, 2021 has passed. Ordinance number 73, 2021.
An ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the 1,100 general fund for the Massillon Civil Service Commission for the year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes, this appropriation is the $20,000 due to some of the retirements and promotions that have happened within the city that's resulted in more testing and other assessments related to, to those matters of employment in the city. I'm ready to move forward with this unless there's any discussion this evening. Seeing none, I make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings, bringing ordinance number 73-2021 forward for a vote.
Seconded by?
Councilwoman Tharet.
Roll call for suspension.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Sloots.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Littman.
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
And for passage.
Sloots.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Yes.
Vern Kane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Littman.
Yes.
And Lombardi.
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number 73, 2021 has passed. Ordinance number 74, 2021.
An ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the 1,100 general fund for the year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes, this is appropriation for $89,243 to the MMO Rewards Supplies. Quick summary, due to the wellness program we have in the city, we are able to be reimbursed for certain expenses. Those expenses were given to us for review at the last work session. They've already been approved by the organization that is to give us this, these monies, but they do have to be reimbursed. Now, we did have some questions, and I thought about it later that night. I figured it out and kinda had, and then called the auditor, and, and we talked through it. What we have created here, the MMO Rewards Supplies is an expense account. It is not a revenue account. So we are putting the money into this account line item, and then we can spend out of it. When we get reimbursed, that money will come into the revenue, which would just be the general fund, and it'll, it'll reintermingle right back into the general fund where the money originally came from. And that was where some of that confusion we had last week. We thought it would go back into this account. It cannot. This is an expense only account. So if there are no other questions, we would be ready to move forward. Seeing none, I make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings, bringing ordinance number 74-2021 forward for a vote.
Seconded by?
Councilman Greg.
Roll call for suspension.
Tharet.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Yes.
Vern Kane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Littman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
And Sloots.
Yes.
Nine yes for suspension.
And for passage.
Tharet.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Littman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Sloots.
Yes.
And Tharet.
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number 74, 2021 has passed. Ordinance number 75, 2021.
An ordinance making certain appropriations from the unappropriated balance of the 1,234 Park and Recreation Fund for the year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes, this is the $50,000 associated with the Parks and Rec Project that we just discussed and approved. Is there any other further discussion? Seeing none, I make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings, bringing ordinance number 75-2021 forward for a vote.
Seconded by?
Councilwoman Tharet.
Roll call for suspension.
Kramer.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Littman. Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Sloots.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
There.
Yes.
Nine yes for suspensions.
And for passage?
Greg.
Yes.
Vern Kane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Littman.
Yes.
Lombardi. Sloots.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
And Kramer.
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number 75, 2021 has passed. Ordinance number 76, 2021.
An ordinance authorizing the Director of Law of the City of Massillon, Ohio to renew the one-year contract with the City of Canal Fulton for the purpose of providing prosecutorial services and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes, this is exactly as the title states. Is there any discussion on this evening? Seeing none, I make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings, bringing ordinance number 76-2021 forward for a vote.
Seconded by?
Councilman Greg.
Roll call for suspension.
Vern Kane.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Littman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Sloots.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Yes, for suspension.
And for passage.
Lewis.
Yes.
Littman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Sloots.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Tharet.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And Vern Kane.
Yes.
Nine yes for passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ordinance number 76, 2021 has passed. Is there any unfinished business?
No, there is not.
I don't know if this is the right place to, to talk about this, Diane, but you and I talked about your copier.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to discuss that with council?
I've only gotten one quote, and that was from Conica Manalta through Graphic Enterprises. And they quoted me, I believe, $147 a month to lease a copier with a service agreement. But it, I didn't bring that paperwork home with me, but if we go over so many copies, it's like .079 cents per copy. I have a call into Copy Co., have not, not got a response from them yet, but I'd like to get a few more quotes, because the old copier that we had prior to the one that we inherited from the hospital, our payment was every three months. And I believe this was like two And I believe it was like two hundred and thirty-something dollars as opposed to a hundred and forty-seven dollars a month. So I'm still doing some research on that.
Okay, and have you contacted the people that we used to go through?
Uh, that was Copyco, and that's the ones that have not responded to me yet. But by me being, you know, off Friday and then off today, they could have responded, but I, you know, I just haven't gotten anything from them. But I'm going, like I said, I will continue to research on that to see if I can get us the best deal possible.
Okay, for those of you who aren't aware, Diane's copier died, and you've been using whose copier, Diane?
The copier from the prosecutor's office, and I appreciate Justin and his crew for allowing me to do so. That is probably the the reason for a lot of errors and because I have to copy it to a flash drive, take it over to the prosecutor's office, print it, and then scan it back to myself. I also gotten in touch with Fred over in the engineering office to see if he could program the printer that we just purchased, the little miniature printer for me to work from home, if he could connect that to my computer and I can print and scan from that. So I will be following up with him tomorrow also.
Okay.
That's where we're at right now.
Okay, keep us up to date on that. I hope we're all in agreement.
Yes, and the the cost to repair the copier that died would be about twenty-three hundred dollars.
Councilwoman Kramer.
Just to clarify, that copier that Diane is speaking about, we received it from Affinity. I believe there was certain equipment that we acquired that we had a lease to, a lease agreement. Is this one of those pieces of equipment that we had in X number of months or years of a lease agreement?
No, it is not.
Do we still have those pieces of equipment in the city, or are they all being used? Because I thought there were a number of copiers on a list that we were still paying for a lease agreement for.
Ms. Ms. Kramer, Dave Meili, yeah, we, there was, we did have a copier lease that we took care of, and all those copiers, we took what copiers departments wanted out of the hospital, and then at the last auction, many of those copiers were auctioned off.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meili. Anyone else have a question or a concern? Working in an office over at the AAA, I know I would be lost without my copier. So I hope we're all in agreement that as soon as she can get one and brings us the the prices that we could get her back in business. All right. Number nine, petitions and general communications.
A request for a transfer of a liquor license from Bertie Marple Estate in Smith Co-Exe- I believe that would be Co-executor, twenty-nine fifty-four Pinkerton Lane, Springfield Township, Springfield, Zanesville, Ohio, four-three-seven-zero-one, to Village Tavern LLC located at one forty-six First Street Northeast, Massillon, Ohio, four-four-six-four-six. Permit classes would be D-one, D-two, and D-six, and this property is located in Ward Two.
Has the councilperson from Ward Two been given this information?
Yes, yes.
Any questions or concerns with that?
No, they're still operating. They just transferred the license from what I can tell, right? Paperwork shuffle.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, are there any bills, accounts, and claims?
Yes, we have a bill in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars to payable to the repository for the publication of our February ordinances, and we have a bill in the amount of one hundred and forty dollars payable to Graphic Enterprises, which was the service call for our copier, a total of one thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Councilman Lewis.
I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Seconded by.
Councilwoman Starrett.
Roll call.
Littman.
Yes.
Lombardi.
Yes.
Slutes.
Yes.
Starrett.
Yes.
Starrett.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Yes.
Hern Kane.
Yes.
And Lewis.
Yes.
Nine yes to pay the bills.
Clerk will pay the bills and charge them to their proper accounts. Reports from city officials?
Yes, we have the mayor's report for February two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Reports of committees, our next work session will be next Monday, April twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, at six-thirty P.M. In council chambers. Unless something drastic happens. Resolutions or requests of council members?
Madam President.
Councilwoman Littman.
Thank you. I just wanted to also remind the Police and Fire Committee that we have a meeting scheduled for April twelfth at five-thirty as well in council chambers if the committee meeting is in council chambers as well.
Anyone else? Okay. Call of the calendar, nothing. No third reading ordinances, no second reading ordinances and resolutions. So we're at number seventeen on the agenda where the public can speak on any topic that did not appear on tonight's agenda. If you wish to do so, please state your name, address, and topic you wish to discuss.
Madam President, this is the mayor. I wanted to see if you wanted me to give my report.
I would love that. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. First, I'd like to give a public thank you to Campbell Oil for the fifty thousand dollar donation. That affects our entire city. It's recreation for our, all of our residents, and so we do really appreciate their donation. Also like to commend all of our departments. They've done an excellent job navigating through COVID with Barb Sylvester. Really, overall, the department's done, everyone has done a wonderful job, including Barb. So I'd like to thank them publicly. Our catch basin contracts, one and two, are signed, so that will be beginning. Our income tax, you all received the report, but I'll report it again. We only have through February at this time. For February, we're down eight percent, but for the year, we're up eleven percent. The streetscape, today Central Allied was out working on that today, as you can see in the, on Erie Avenue, and they'll continue to work until that's completed. Great news for all of our members of council as well as our citizens. May seventeenth is the income tax filing. It has been extended by the state, and you can now file your taxes online, and you can also pay online, and that's new for our income tax department. You also all receive Massillon Matters. It's a publication we're doing quarterly. It's going in the, inside the sewer bill. But we all emailed a copy to each one of you, and it just gives a few tips in there for our residents and some information. I wanted to report on Altman Hospital, their patients, the numbers are up. We have had positive reviews, in fact, recently calling me with positive reviews as well. This, having this emergency room in our city and being able to do x-rays and labs is a huge benefit to the residents in our city and such a convenience for our patients and our EMS staff as well to have the ER here in in our city. Duncan Plaza is seventy-five percent complete, and we'll be bringing you more information as we move forward. The following contracts are, have been signed. Erie Street Underpass, the Target Street Contract, Erie Street South Resurfacing. Of course, I said Catch Basin One and Two, as well as Castle West. So all of those that you passed, they are all under contract. Our sidewalk program, great numbers here. We have forty-one people that have been interested. Nine are under contract, and with those nine, the amount comes to twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. If we would fund all forty-one, and they're going through the process, the rest of them are going through the process now, we would be at fifty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. So it, the program has really taken off. Just want to remind everyone that they need to get their applications and their pictures in before April thirtieth. The fire ladder truck is on order, and our record management system for the police department is on order, and that system is going to connect us throughout the county with anyone that has ordered the record management system. That is a huge plus for Stark County. The catch basin vac will be delivered soon, and they will also provide training and maintenance for that. The K-9 officer, the second one, I thought you would be interested in this, is still in training and doing well. The Doughton Bridge, the signing, we're signing a contract with Wenger, and we still don't have a start date, but we will after we sign that contract. All the demolitions that we're going to do in the city, Jimmy Johnson and Sam Walters will be heading that up, and we'll be able to give you more information as we go through that process. And all other projects that we have not updated you on are on schedule. So if you have any questions, that's my report for April.
Does anyone have any questions for the mayor? Councilman Hern Kane.
Thank you, Madam President. Are there any pending legal matters or any litigation that we need to be aware of at this time?
I will turn that over to Justin Richard, and he can answer any questions from there.
Thank you. Madam President.
Go ahead, Mr. Richard.
Thank you. Currently, we we still have a couple of ongoing matters on the Wales Road project that we're trying to close out. There's also, let me just clarify. Councilperson Hern Kane, you said pending litigation or active litigation?
Any, any?
Either?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Anything that we need to know.
Sure. As you may have known, we got into a lease agreement prior administration ago with Mayor Chicanelli, and we signed a lease that has to do with the Hampton and and the the parking lot and some of the maintenance on that. So we're currently trying to renegotiate that at this time, but other than that, there's nothing else pending.
Anyone else? Um, I have a question. Mayor, maybe you can answer it. On the the Wales Road, where they're going into the yards and they're digging and really, really, really big holes to put the, I guess, some of the utilities underground, is the City of Massillon is doing that? I know it's a state project, but who is actually doing the work? Are you still there, Mayor?
Um, I I could go ahead and answer that for you, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the work that's being done there is the utility companies.
So.
That's who's doing the work at the present time.
Okay, so my yard escaped that, but my neighbors didn't, and they dig, they dug really two enormous, enormous holes. So once they put the dirt back, the seed and the straw, are they done?
They will have to repair everything back to the original state that it was.
So I, they put the straw and the seed down, but the yard is just so uneven, and before that, it was beautiful. So is there any recourse for the neighbors if the yard is not put back to their satisfaction?
Yes, if you, if you want to have them call into our office and give us the address, we'll definitely take care of it with the utility companies and the contractors that are working for them.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Barrett.
Thank you, Madam President. I guess for the mayor and the State Service Director, can we have the engineers on next week to give us a little more about this, because, like I said, it's it's hard to imagine, you know, that inches turned into feet the way they did on this project. So I'm kind of curious to see what, how things are going to pan out. If you look down near the, Joey's Kendall Tavern up there, the hole is almost against the building. So does this mean if they walk out that front door, they're walking into the street? You know, questions like that, and like she said, lots of holes are in yards now up against porches. I didn't think it was supposed to be that invasive.
Sylvester, can you have the engineers on next week? Do you want next during our work session?
We can have them on next week. That was, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Seeing none, Councilman Lombardi.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President Eisenick. I motion that we adjourn.
Seconded by.
Councilwoman Littman.
Meeting adjourned. Diane, I'll see you tomorrow morning. Diane.
Between eight, three and nine. Are you going to be home?
I'll be home.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.